Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, May 22nd, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, to start this evening, we approve the agenda. I understand, Jeremy, are most of the attendees here for the second item, the Bush Lake Pet Hospital?
It appears so, yes.
What do everyone think about switching the order?
Sounds good.
So we'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right. Next up are the approval of the minutes from the March 13th, 2023 meeting. Any concerns or requests for edits to the minutes? Seeing none, entertaining motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Minutes are approved. All right, with the new agenda, we're going to start out, we have three public hearings this evening, but we're going to start with Bush Lake Pet Hospital. Then we will go back to the order of Baker Road Assisted Living, and then after that, to the Kewahatchie. So, Bush Lake Pet Hospital, 2023-04, this is a request for zoning change from office, OFC, to neighborhood commercial and comm on 1.19 acres. There's a PUD concept review on 1.19 acres. PUD review with waivers on 1.19 acres. Site plan review on 1.19 acres. Will proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
If you would state your name for the record and tell us about your request, please.
Michael Cohen, I am with Highland Ventures. We are the developer in this project. Our goal, I have three goals tonight. One is to secure the zoning change. Two, get approval on the two waivers variances we're seeking. And then ultimately, number three, get site plan approval to move on to the city council. I believe all of you received a project narrative from Farnsworth, who is our engineer on the project. I will not bore you by reading the entire thing, but I will recap a couple of highlights here, just to bring some little narrative from me to it. So general overview, we're going to propose to develop a 5,074 square foot commercial building on this parcel, which is a 1.19 acre parcel next to Kinderberry Hill. I think everyone's probably familiar with that area. The pet hospital will be a tenant in 3958 square feet, and we will have a 1,015 square foot vacancy for future tenant. The development's going to include required stormwater detention, water quality structures, storm inlets and piping, water sewer services, parking and drive aisles, lawn landscape areas. No kennels are included in this proposal. They do not board animals overnight, only in surgical circumstances where an animal may have to stay. But I also have Dr. Gates here, who will come up in a minute and just give you a little overview about Bush Lake Hospital. Normal hours of operation for Bush Lake, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Sunday closed. The animal hospital will not have overnight boarding, as I said. The city guide plan framework, the current site is zoned as office. The proposed rezoning for the parcel is PUD neighborhood commercial. The proposed zoning for the 1.19 acre parcel follows the Eden Prairie 2040 guide plan and is compatible with adjacent uses. So talking to Mr. Barnhart with the city in zoning, it is guided commercial, so in that area. The zoning classification, the unusual shape of the lot that is bounded by Hennepin Road and the off-ramp from US 169 has resulted in some design challenges. So that's where the two variances are going to come in. One, lot size requirement is two acres. The existing plat is 1.19. Requesting a waiver on the minimum lot size requirement of two acres. Number two, the lot depth, the required lot depth is 200 feet. However, this is an odd shape, kind of a trapezoidal shaped parcel. So with a mean depth of 129 feet, we do have to seek a waiver for the 200-foot depth. Landscaping, landscape material proposed for the project meets the requirements outlined in the Eden Prairie zoning ordinance. Sustainable components incorporated into this project, there's a number of them. However, I did want to highlight that we are going to provide one conduit with a pole wire for future EV charging in the parking lot. Phasing and construction schedule, assuming everything goes well and we are approved for our project, we would have an anticipated start date of July 1st, 2023, with a complete date of January 1st, 2024. And then just one other thing to note, shore land ordinance, floodplain restriction. The project is not subject to shoreline ordinance, as the property does not abut any public waters or wetlands. In addition, the floodplain ordinance does not apply to this project. Stormwater management, separate stormwater management report has been prepared for the project, which you'll see I have a little PowerPoint presentation. You can see our proposed stormwater management underneath the parking lot. It's kind of a tank system. Water and wetlands, no wetlands, areas present on this site. Wildlife, threatened species, no known threatened or endangered species are on the project site either. So as I mentioned, that was just a recap of some of the narrative that you all had. Can you put the?
Yeah, it's ready.
Great. So of course you have to throw, you know, a cute dog in there, right? So with your permission, I'd love to have Dr. Gates come up with Bush Lake and just kind of give you an overview of what they do.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great.
Good evening, if you'd just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Dr. Douglas Gates, I'm with Bush Lake Pet Hospital. So with Bush Lake, we've been in business for coming up on over 35 years. Previously, it was owned by Dr. Ernest Dragger, and since his late passing, I've taken over as kind of running the veterinary aspect of it. So we are a small animal veterinary hospital, so we see dogs, cats, rabbits, but I also do a lot of exotic stuff, so rabbits, reptiles, stuff like that. It's kind of one of our specialty aspects. We're going to be running probably about two doctors right now out of location, me and Dr. Travis, as you can see up there. Biggest thing I like, I love working with a lot of rescues, work with Rabbit Rescue Minnesota, have a couple of them with Great Dane Rescue, and working on getting a couple more aspects there, but really locating on hitting that community aspect and really making our presence known and helping out. And I know there's a larger senior living facility that's right across that's pet friendly, so I'm sure I'll be over there a bunch, but yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So Bush Lake Pet Hospital is currently located in Bloomington. They will be then relocating to Eden Prairie. I think you're only about a mile away now?
A mile and a half.
That's pretty close, so they'll be coming across 169. So you can see our renderings on the television there. Sharp looking building. All to, you know, city standards, building material standards. So we just have a couple of the renderings, west elevation, east elevations. And again, I pretty much covered all of it. This at least gives you an idea of what it's going to look like. And then we have our site plan here, so it just shows, again, that kind of odd shaped triangle plat that we're on. You can see the building. We did have to move it up a little bit through the zoning process here. It's again, a tight, tight fit, but everything works. On the next plan, you'll see that's where the landscaping. We had to add quite a bit of landscaping, I think throughout the years. As that, those plats were developed, it all got pushed on to the very last developer, so we were lucky to get all the landscaping requirements. So we did come to an agreement with zoning on that. This picture also shows you the stormwater retention underneath that parking lot. You can kind of see it in front of the building there. So we had to do quite a bit of planning there. The parking lot will attach to the existing drive aisle with Kinderberry. That's part of the easement on that property, so city zoning actually, I wouldn't say required, but really wanted us to do that, and we did adhere to that. So there will be two means of ingress egress. You can either turn into the part that I think you're highlighting right now, or you can turn into the Kinderberry Hill and drive through. And our plan is to have, you know, speed limit signs, slow down. I think we talked about doing a speed bump in there, so people don't, you know, speed through that parking lot, obviously with children present. That's pretty much it for the site plan. I will tell you, we did have a neighborhood meeting, which I'm sure you'll hear from some of the residents here. The meeting went very well, we had a great reception from the neighborhood, and I'm sure some of them might bring up a concern, the one major concern from the meeting, which really didn't have to do with our development per se, it's more the speed limit on Hennepin Town Road, especially driving southbound, coming out of, gosh, I forget the name of that street, across the street. Belmont, thank you. I knew someone would know that. Coming out from Belmont, you know, traffic coming 45 miles an hour around that corner heading southbound was really the biggest concern that came from the neighborhood meeting. Otherwise, everyone was very receptive and open to our project. That's it for me.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any initial questions for Mr. Cohen?
I just have one. I just have one quick question. I drive by there every day, I live a mile down the street. But the site plan with the building with the Kinderberry, is that the end of the building or is that the actual fence that's connected to it?
Can we go back to that? So the, there will be space, and you see some trees between our building and the fence to Kinderberry.
Okay.
So there'll be some screening there with trees.
So that's just the building, the end of the building, that's not the fence that Kinderberry has connected to the building?
Correct.
Do you know how far out that fence goes from the?
Boy, can you see a measurement on there? I believe there's a measurement, I don't know offhand, I'd have to look at that. I don't know if you can zoom in on that, Jeremy?
No, I can't. Yeah, I'm sorry, kidding.
No. I don't know that answer, but I can get it.
That's all the question I have.
Commissioner Mitty? My question is, a couple, well, one question slash comment, the other question. Retail parking, so I think the report said overall you're at about five per thousand and plus like four, I think that were required to be provided for the kinder. For this remaining vacant space, I know that with that level of parking, I guess I have some concern, because there are certain uses where that would not be enough parking. And I want to know, I guess what's your ideas for what kind of user is going to go there?
Yeah, that's a great question, that one came up in the neighborhood meeting. I don't know that answer. You know, obviously, if you want to fill that space with a tenant, our intent would not be to fill it with a high-traffic tenant, just because of, you know, there's not a lot of parking in front of that space and with the Kinderberry Hill, so we wouldn't be looking at a coffee shop or a, you know, food or anything that would really drive a lot of traffic. I would think kind of a light retail use would be most appropriate, so.
My other question or comment is, in that main landscaping island that's at the front of the pet hospital entrance, I didn't look really closely into the landscape plans to see exactly what was specified there, but, you know, knowing from using, being in vet places, right, or going to the pet store to everybody, their pet comes out and they relieve themselves, and I feel like that's going to be the main area, everybody's walking towards the door, they sniff, they do their thing, so it's going to kill whatever's there. So I guess my question or comment would be, was that thought of coming up with the landscaping plan? And/or if not, I think that there's two ways to go about it. One, make sure you plant things that are just physically not going to allow dogs to, you know, like bushes or things that are just going to make it too hard for, and they'll go over by the grass. But if there's something like daylilies, I feel like something like that probably wouldn't survive very well, because they'd get, you know, they wouldn't even really have the chance to grow with that, you know, dogs using that. So I would encourage looking at that and making sure the plant selection there makes sense for.
Sure, no, that makes sense. I will note that on the, if you're looking at the drawing there, on the back, the rear left corner, there is a 10 by 15 fenced-in area for the animals to use the restroom. They are leashed and supervised, so there is no, you know, animal runs, there's no dog runs. I couldn't speak to whether animals go to the restroom prior to entering. That would be a question for Dr. Gates. But I know in their existing location now, they're in a strip center, which is mostly concrete, so I have to believe animals probably come in and go to the bathroom once they're here.
There's a strip of grass between the road and the door, and it's like you said, everyone likes to go there.
Yeah, great, great suggestion, though, planting something that doesn't die.
First, Chair.
Commissioner Far.
Yep. Quick things. First of all, I'm not sure our city has a policy yet on EV charging stations, so we're kind of navigating through this. You said you were going to put some conduits in there.
Yep.
And just, we're going to have to define what EV-ready means, we want to promote that. So would you make sure that your panel boards and transformers are sized up to accommodate the electrical load besides just putting the conduit in there?
Yes.
Make sure it's EV-ready?
Yep.
Great, thanks. Second thing, we don't have very many projects where you drive in the front entry driveway and be met with the trash enclosure gates staring at you in the face. This is a very challenging site, and I think you've done a terrific job with it. So I don't want to be overly critical of that, but I think maybe just a suggestion to rotate that 90 degrees so that the doors, the gates to that trash enclosure open to the right on this plan, or I think that's south. Then you wouldn't see the trash and the gates, but you could just, the trash guy would get out of his truck, he'd have to open up the gates anyway, he could, you know, side discharge those trash dumpsters, and then his truck fork could bring it up. So just get those doors out of public sight there by just rotating that 90 degrees, if you would.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a job for our engineer.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's easily accomplished. And jumping on Commissioner Mitty's point about maybe what that future tenant would be, I did drive the site a couple of times, and even with that tall wooden sound wall where you can't see this building at all from southbound 169, northbound, there's a very important viewway into your back of the site here. As a matter of fact, your next door neighbor Kinderberry has a big sign facing that Highway 169 northbound frontage, even though their building is, of course, facing the main street that you're doing, Hennepin Town Road. So I have a feeling that any tenant that's attracted to your building is going to see that frontage opportunity and ask for a sign facing 169. Your east elevation, instead of having four-sided architecture, you have three-sided. Your architect lowered that back wall just to save some money, but that keeps the view to the rooftop HVAC units more visible from Highway 169. And I would encourage you to keep that parapet up at that same full height all the way around the building. Gives you more opportunity for signage for that tenant who wants it there, and it won't look like the back of a building when people look to the left as they're driving northbound on 169, or especially that entrance ramp off Pioneer Trailhead.
Yeah, that's a good.
It's kind of a visible area there.
And I think part of the reason we brought the parapet down was there was extra landscape requirements based on height. If we went over 20 feet high, there was a certain amount of caliper inches of plantings that we would have had to have done.
Sure.
So I think that's part of why we brought it down.
Okay.
Was to, you know, reduce the amount of landscaping that would have been necessary.
Sure, if that in fact was a trade-off issue, I would certainly opt for the taller parapet wall and the relaxation of the landscaping, because I know someone's going to ask for signage there.
Sure, yeah.
That's all, Chair, thank you. Commissioner Far, Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Taylor.
So I had a chance to stop by and talk to some of the staff at the daycare center, and one of the concerns they had was the sharing of the parking lot. And you mentioned it, and you said you were, the team was considering putting in speed bumps. Is there any reason why we wouldn't put some type of speed control there, especially with kids coming in and out with parents during?
Yeah, I mean, our intention is to do that. I just don't know that it's on this plan, but that is our intention. I don't know that we got into the minutia of just, you know, throwing a bump on a site plan, but that is our intention. And that's done when they're pouring asphalt.
Right.
A little bit extra asphalt.
Now, would that include a speed bump where the existing daycare is as well? Have you had a chance to talk to their corporate?
Yeah, so I spoke to the actual building owner, and they're in favor of the project. You know, they have no problems with anything that we're doing. I'm not sure that they're necessarily plugged into the day-to-day operations of the daycare, so we spoke more as landowners, right? So they didn't really address any concerns with the speed or the parking or anything like that. It was just, yeah, that's fine, that's kind of what I got from them, so. But yeah, I mean, we're certainly open to more, talking to them about it. If they want us to add one, and it's a city recommendation that we add one further down on their property, obviously, we want their permission before we do anything structurally to their parking lot, but yeah, I mean, that's certainly a road we would go down, literally.
Especially for the safety for the kids, I would encourage.
Yeah.
Encourage that conversation to happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen, we're going to go to the staff report.
Great, thank you.
Jeremy, would you take us through your staff report, please?
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Chair Commissioners. The applicant did hit the high points in his description of the project. There are four actions requested tonight. Those being a zone change from office to neighborhood commercial, a planned unit development, concept review, a planned unit development, district review with waivers, and then the site plan review, all of which are on 1.19 acres. The zone change from office to neighborhood commercials will require waiver because of the lot size and the lot depth configuration of the existing lot. Staff supports this waiver because we feel that the neighborhood commercial zoning district, there's several zoning districts that would fit the use that's proposed, but the neighborhood commercial zoning district best fits with the neighborhood in terms of the intent of that zoning district and the uses that are involved with that. And plus, we note that the applicant is not changing anything with the lot, the lot size, the lot depth, that's as it was before, it will be this way, the applicant isn't changing it. So staff does support a waiver in the PUD process for this project because of those reasons. We feel in the long run it's a better, a better fit for the neighborhood. I do note that the building does meet or exceeds the minimum requirements from a setback and building materials standpoints. Your comments on the parapet wall are well-made, and certainly we can take a note of that. The staff report does outline kind of more of the details, but as I said before, the applicant really hit the high points that we wanted to hit. The access issue, we identified that early. When the original Kinderberry development came through, that, it was identified for cross-access easement and shared parking requirements between the two parcels. Originally, this parcel was intended for an office use. We still feel from a planning staff perspective that the connection between the two uses is good. It does reduce trips on Hennepin Town Road. And so we do think that that's an issue to carry forward in terms of how they've drawn it here. This project also provides four spaces, four, I believe it's four spaces for the office or the Kinderberry use to the south. So from a parking perspective, Ms. Mitty, you mentioned a parking question, I believe, earlier. It does exceed the requirements in terms of parking, based on the size of the building at five per thousand. They need 30 spaces, I believe they provide 34, so 30 plus the floor, where we meet the requirements there. I'd be happy to stand for any questions, but staff is recommending approval of the four actions, including the waivers for lot area and lot depth.
Thank you. Initial questions for the city? Commissioner Mitty?
Not fully knowing the history from the Kinderberry development, but it seems to, this reference of it was going to be office, et cetera, I interpreted that as this site previously went through the PUD process as part of the daycare. And so I'm curious why this wouldn't be a PUD amendment and said it's its own PUD. Was it ever part of the old one that, you know, if there was a previous version where it was going to be an office development, and it was kind of part of the Kinderberry development?
I believe it was intended, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I believe it was intended to be an office, but I don't believe it was formally noted that this would be an office, so it did not go through that PUD process to make it an office use. And so this, therefore, there was no PUD demand for this particular parcel, and that's why we're going through this separate kind of PUD, concept of PUD district review.
Okay.
Any other initial questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. We had a few people sign up, but it looks like only one person would like to speak, but if someone changed their mind, that's not a problem at all. But the first person that signed up was Alicia Reeves. Would you like to come forward? Good evening, Ms. Reeves. I already said your name for the record, I guess, so.
Okay, yes, that's my name. And I have my group here from Bluff Country Village condominiums and townhomes. We fully support the vet hospital. However, we are concerned about the traffic on Hennepin Town Road, and we need the city's help in reducing the speed limit before something awful happens, is what I would say. People, the speed limit is 45, and then as you turn the corner, it's 40. If you're exiting Belmont Lane, you really don't have a good sightline to the north, and it's dangerous for people that are exiting our property, as well as there are two school bus stops that'll be closed by, that would be on the west side of Hennepin Town Road, but across the street from the veterinary hospital. And I'm also, I'm happy to hear just the questions about the Child Development Center, because obviously there are children there, and I'm a grandmother, I have a granddaughter there. And I would like to see, you know, maybe some child at play signs or the speed bump, and, excuse me, the speed bump that he mentioned. So those are my comments. Did I get everything? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, if you'd state your name for the record, please.
I'm Jerry Maher, 9778 Belmont Lane. And I'd just like to clarify a couple of things about this traffic problem. The, when you're exiting Belmont Lane, the first car you can see is about 112 feet to the north, which is, takes about three seconds at 40 miles an hour, so the car can't stop. It's, the onus is on the car coming out of Belmont Lane to actually get out of that lane before anybody comes around the corner. Now, it's being complicated with a left turn lane in there, which goes into the north exit, entrance of the pet hospital. So you're sitting on Belmont Lane, there's a car in the left turn lane, you have to worry about somebody coming around the corner 112 feet away. So as Alicia mentioned, one possibility we thought of was, let's cut the speed limit. But there, we also have another plan, which is we would like to cut the trees and the bushes and stuff that are there so that we can have a complete sightline from Belmont Lane to Linden. That's the way it was 20 years ago when the association was set up. The association owns the land on the west side of Hennepin Town Road between Belmont and Linden. However, most of that is a protected wetland, and there are certain limitations in what we can cut, and we don't know exactly what they are right now. We're starting the process this Thursday, when Carter Schultz, the traffic engineer, is going to come and give us his opinions on what parts the city might cut, because they're in the right-of-way of the trail, what parts we could cut, and then do we have to do any negotiating to see if there's anything else that's part of the wetland that we could cut to give us a clear sightline all the way down to Linden? So that's the second part of our strategy. And if we can't cut that sightline, we still are going to need some help from the city to. city to, uh, cut that, uh, speed limit down or give us some flashing signs or something to, uh, slow the traffic down so that we don't have any, uh, serious accidents. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Maher. All right, uh, would anyone else like to come forward and speak? Okay, see, don't, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Salute.
Do I have a second to close it?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of closed public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, public hearings closed. Further discussion from the commissioners.
I guess I'll, I'll start off. Um, tough, tough piece of property. Um, good, in my opinion, um, good use of that property. I like the idea. Um, I think that the, uh, the plan is, as I interpret it, has, is, is a good one and would be a good addition to the city, so in, in general, I support it. That said, the, the two issues are the, are traffic-related, in my opinion. Uh, one, inside the property with kinder care, I think that's a solvable problem, and I think that needs appropriate attention by everybody to make sure we do all we can to make sure inside the, the property and the parking area that, you know, the, the kids are protected. I'm not gonna tell you what the answer to that is, but I think it, it needs, it needs good attention. Um, the, the property or the, the speed issue on Hennepin Town Road, I don't know, um, I, I guess I would ask city engineer, um, do you, do you care to comment on some of what has been, uh, talked about here, and, and if there is a, a plan of action, maybe let us know?
Uh, sure, members of the commission and, uh, chairman, the, there's a few roads in town that we're looking at our speed limit, the speeds and the speed limit that's, uh, signed out there, and I believe this is one of those, those roads that we're reviewing. Um, so it's, it's possible it could be a reduction, but also we have to do a, we'd have to do a speed study, um, to determine what the eighty-fifth percentile is and fiftieth percentile. Um, a lot of the statutes are based on those speed limit criteria. Um, but I would say that even with the reduction, it doesn't necessarily mean that people are gonna drive that, um, as we all know. So I think the biggest issue on this, at this location is the sightlines, and that is correctable with some landscape removal, um, and I'm sure we can work with, with the residents or homeowners association to, to look at that landscaping and see what could be removed if there is some, um, some of that that's required. Uh, but obviously the sightlines need to be improved, that would, that would go a long way to improve in this situation.
And it sounds like there's some meetings set up to, to at least have a discussions around that?
Sounds like it, yes.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Kirk. Commissioner Mitty.
Um, I don't wanna get too bogged down in the traffic conversation because there's nothing the planning commission here can specifically do to, to make that change, but, um, hopefully the city staff and, and, and city council hears these concerns. Um, I agree, it seems like, uh, this is a problem, and this isn't, um, the last piece of the puzzle, you know, that main corner at Hennepin Town Road, um, when that comes through with the redevelopment, we know we're gonna have these same conversations again, so, um, hopefully something gets addressed there, uh, to, to help with that. Um, but overall, I do think that the site is appropriate for neighborhood commercial, I think that it fits that definition pretty well, um, and have no issue with, with, with anything, um, on the development. Um, I agree that I think the, um, owners will be able to solve any potential concerns with a cut through to Kinderberry. I think that there's not a lot of incentive for a driver looking at the map to turn there rather than just turn at, at the actual curb cut, um, because it doesn't seem like it really provides much of a, you know, easier way to get in or shortcut, so hopefully that doesn't become a problem. But overall, I'm, I'm supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitty.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Farr.
I too think this is a great project, um, a tough site being a triangle, and, um, uh, I think they've utilized it very well. I hope we overcome the traffic, uh, concerns and safety issues also along Hennepin Town Road, and agree with Commissioner Mitty that that should be taken up somewhere separately besides this planning commission meeting. Um, uh, if I'm lucky enough to make a recommendation for approval on this project, I might add the two conditions I discussed earlier in my comments, which is to rotate the trash enclosure ninety degrees and to, um, raise the parapet wall on the east elevation to allow, uh, four-sided architecture and signage in the future. Um, if, uh, staff thinks there's a problem with that, uh, parapet raising because of the landscaping issue that the applicant brought up, maybe please let me know and I can rephrase that, uh, separately or differently, I should say.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, so, uh, he's referring to when, when a single-story building is more than twenty feet tall, um, the portion of the building that's more than twenty feet tall is considered a second floor, uh, in terms of, uh, requirements for, um, for landscaping, so the required landscaping may increase if the portion of the building is more than twenty feet tall. That's, um, that's part of the review, but we could certainly review that, and if it comes back that we need to process a waiver, we can, um, we can do that appropriate step.
Okay. Um, in, in my motion and assuming other council member, uh, commission members go along with me, could we, uh, vote in support of that future possible waiver?
Sure, I think so.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Any concerns with Commissioner Farr's proposal there?
Mr. Chair, if, if you're done, Mr. Farr, with your comments. Um, while I agree with your comments, I'm not sure I would support, um, making them part of our motion. Um, my concern with the trash enclosure is that that might not be feasible. I thi, I think the property owners should have the opportunity cons, to consult with their, their trash provider. Um, not all of them would necessarily be willing to, uh, to bring those bins out sideways and then out. Um, it also depends on the type and size of the bins, um, some of them aren't rolling, some of them do need to be picked up with the arms, um, so I don't wanna be overly restrictive by, by adding those requirements. Same with the parapet wall, too, I'd love, I'd love for them to make that change, but I'm not sure that, um, adding it to the motion would, would, uh, you know, provide them with that option or flexibility to do what works for them.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Mitty. May I respond?
Yep.
Um, maybe the commissioners would find it more favorable if we soften that, instead of making it a condition of approval, make it just a recommendation for study on those two issues instead, so that they would take logic. I, I, I think that's the, the, the right middle ground from my standpoint. I think the mentioning of it and, and the encouragement, but, uh, not necessarily without the mandate. Without the mandate. Sure.
Seeing general agreement, if you wanna
Okay.
make a recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Farr.
Um, I move to recommend approval for zone change from office to neighborhood commercial on 1.19 acres, uh, planned unit development concept review on 1.19 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 1.19 acres, and site plan review on 1.19 acres, as represented in the staff report dated May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, and based on the plans last dated May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and with further recommendation, uh, from the commission to study the orientation of the trash enclosure gates and the height of the east building wall in relationship to the highway visibility.
Second. All right. I have a motion for Commissioner Farr and a second for Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Okay. We recommend approval. Good luck on your project and happy to have you, Neen Perry. All right, moving on to the next public hearing this evening, this is Baker Road Assisted Living twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two, request for approval of guide plan change from office to medium-high-density residential on 3.79 acres, PUD concept plan review on 3.79 acres, PUD district view with waivers on 3.79 acres, zone changing from office to RM dash two-point-five on 3.79 acres, site plan review on those through, same 3.79 acres. All right, would the proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening, if you would, state your name for the record, please, and tell us about your request.
Good evening, commissioners and chair. Uh, my name is Eric Reiners, I'm a principal at SRA, and, uh, we're leading the design efforts, uh, for this somewhat unique, uh, reuse and repositioning. Um, maybe I'll start with the, uh, there you go.
It's a power, or it's a PDF, so I can't, I'll do it.
Okay. So, um, this is just a cover image, so we can go right to page two. Uh, this parcel is located at the, um, southwest quadrant of Highway sixty-two and Baker Road. Um, to the west, immediate west, is industrial, um, uses, sixty-two, of course, to the north, Lifetime Fitness across Baker Road to the east, and a townhouse, uh, association, uh, to the immediate south. Um, the building and site are both, what I would categorize as highly unique. Um, the building was developed mid-nineties as an office, and, uh, that is how the, uh, property is currently zoned and utilized. Over the last few years, that particular building has been, um, a bit underutilized, and the site is remarkable and provides a great deal of opportunity. Um, it could be developed in other ways, but we're here today to talk about repositioning this, um, and better utilizing this parcel and, uh, and the unique site, uh, that it, uh, that it has. Um, you can see that it's a well-wooded site, uh, well-screened from surrounding uses and, and, uh, the roadways. Um, it has a single point of access from the east off of Baker Road and, uh, is accessed via a cross-access easement, um, with that property, uh, that sits between it and Baker. I'm gonna go to the next slide. So what this slide, um, illustrates is some of the unique site characteristics that we have here. Um, there is a wetland, uh, that is delineated, uh, and we, uh, meet all the required setbacks from, um, it, on the east boundary and shared with that other office, uh, that, uh, sits to the east, immediately to the east. There's a, a low-lying area to the west, northwest of the building, that, um, dips to thirty feet below our building main level. Um, there is raised elevation or hills bounding the site on the west and to the south that are both twenty-five feet higher than our main level elevation, and it, again, it's all densely wooded, as you saw in the aerial. Uh, we're here today to ask for five actions, uh, guide plan change from office to medium-high-density residential, a PUD concept plan review, PUD district review with waivers, and I'll get to those later in the presentation, a zone change from office to RM two-point-five, and a site plan review. The initial phase of the project will simply be a renovation and remodeling of the existing structure. Um, the entire interiors will be, um, uh, demolished and removed, and the building will be, uh, renovated and remodeled for thirty-one assisted living residences, and these are configured in a variety of suite configurations, um, with all the amenity and support spaces of, uh, of the newest assisted living facilities. Um, there's gonna be a commercial kitchen here, dining space, lounge spaces, group activity spaces, staff spaces, and, and needless to say, uh, remarkable outdoor spaces. Um, and once this building is fully occupied, stabilized, um, the, uh, new owner developer wishes to have the opportunity to add additional units to the site, and given its site size and configuration, that opportunity exists. So we're gonna go to the next slide, please, thank you. Um, here you see that addition, uh, connected to the west wall of the existing building and extending southward out into what is the existing parking lot. Again, this would be a future addition at a time to be determined, um, but again, we wanna get through the, uh, the actions for tonight to set the, the, uh, zoning properly, the PUD properly, and, and, and set the stage for this future addition. Um, that future building would be an additional forty, I'm sorry, eighty-one units, and, um, even with that additional size, we would reconfigure the parking, um, and services to support that building. This project would require a great deal of, um, site work, um, but Civil Site Group has, uh, gone to great extent, both in figuring out the engineering, grading, land landscaping requires, requirements to make that possible. The building, uh, elevations, you can see here, we're starting with, uh, the east building elevation, and we're using, um, many of the materials that are on the existing building today to tie that new addition, um, to the existing building. There are very specific design overlay requirements, as you know, uh, coming from the city of, of Eden Prairie, and, uh, we work closely with staff in, uh, configuring this addition to meet all of the design requirements. Next, you'll see the south building elevation, west building elevation, and finally, north building elevation. Um, next. As I alluded to, uh, just before, uh, Civil Site Group is our civil engineer on the project. Um, there's a great deal of, um, work that's gone into not only working out the, the grading and training requirements on this highly topographic site, but, um, parking, circulation, services, and even fire access have all been, uh, considered here in how the building is configured on-site. The, uh, uh, landscape plan includes, uh, critical or, um, all tree replacement requirements, um, together with, uh, selective landscaping around patios and gardens. One final image of the building, this is, this is from the southwest. Um, there is one part where the perimeter hills on-site dip down slightly, um, to cr, create a possible view angle from the townhouse, uh, association to the south, um, but again, with the landscaping and screening, uh, steps we've taken in site planning, um, it will be, uh, scantily visible to our neighbors. Um, and the use is, uh, as you can imagine, a very low-impact use, low traffic, um, low noise, uh, really one of the best neighbors, uh, of any building type. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff and commissioners for questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reiners. Initial questions for Mr. Reiners. Commissioner Farr.
Uh, just a couple of quick ones. Um, driving onto the property, uh, this last weekend, I noticed that the sixty-two-hundred building that you have to drive through to get there
Yes.
has a shared access easement, of course. All their parking stalls have a warning on it about, uh, nobody else parking there, and presumably that was the problem that happened from, uh, Lifetime Fitness. I think there was overflow parking from Lifetime Fitness a number of years ago, if my memory serves me right.
Okay.
I don't know if that's still a problem or not, but I think that's the warning sign. So I'm thinking, you know, three-hundred-and-sixty-three days a week, this parking lot's gonna be sufficient, and that covered parking doesn't make sense for this use at all, so I'm with you a hundred, hundred percent, but
Yeah.
Mother's Day and Christmas, you're gonna have a lot of visitors. Can you have a shared parking agreement with the sixty-two-hundred building so that on Mother's Day and Christmas, they can use that parking lot?
That's a spectacular idea. I, I, I can certainly suggest it to our owner and, uh, and see if we can work that out
Okay.
as an extension of the cross-access easement.
I think that'd be a good idea. Um, there's a, a receiving dock labeled on your site plan.
Yes.
Is that only for a building, uh, maintenance purposes, or is that where the residents will pull up with their moving van to get out of the way of the fire truck so that there's a fire line?
Yeah.
lane?
Yeah. That is not a move-in and move-out point. Another good question, though, it is directly adjacent to the commercial kitchen. So it will receive food deliveries periodically, but move-in, move-out will be handled through the main entrance.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Just a warning to staff, you got a question coming there about the fire lane when you're done with your report. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Mehdi.
Looking at the floor plan of the Phase 1 specifically, it was a little hard to tell because it didn't have all of the detail, but do some of the units share a bathroom? How does that work?
Yes. So, under the assisted-living code, you are permitted to share private restroom facilities between two or three beds, as long as you don't have to go into a public corridor to access it. So that's why these studio suites or studios are configured in small suite configurations, so they have private sitting spaces that they can share.
And then, how does that work security-wise? Are the doors... Like, if I go into the bathroom, I can't get into my neighbor's unit by accident, wander over there? Do they know each... You know, how does that work?
Yes. All the residents would know each other, but I got to be honest, the hardware configurations have not been set yet, so...
Thanks.
Other questions right now?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, would you take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, Chair Commissioners. As mentioned before, there are five requests. I won't list them all again, but five requests are five separate actions. There are four...
Reiner, excuse... You can sit down if you'd like. You don't have to stand.
That's right. Thanks. There are four waivers requested. Those being, the max density proposed for this project is 27.7 units per acre. The max density allowed in the RM 2.5 zoning district is 17.4 units an acre, so it's a slight increase over what's allowed by right. Mr. Farr mentioned the covered parking. They're not proposing any covered parking. The way the code reads is on multifamily dwelling units, half of the required parking spaces need to be covered. We felt a waiver in this situation was appropriate because the residents here won't be driving, so they... Basically, all it's going to have is visitor and staff cars, and we didn't feel it was necessary to house those in a garage-type situation. The building height is 2 feet 4 and 1/4 inches too tall, and partly because of the barrel kind of roof of a portion of the addition. And that was added at staff's suggestion and recommendation to kind of play on what's the motif of the original building, to kind of make those two additions look like they're like work together. And then lastly, there's a parking island on the southwest corner of the building that a portion of it is paved to accommodate a sidewalk extension and an ADA ramp to allow people in this kind of that portion of the portion of the site access the sidewalk to get to the site or get to the building without kind of walking or going through the parking lot. That won't trigger until Phase 2 because that portion of the parking lot or that portion of the sidewalk won't be built until Phase 2. So those are the four waivers we've identified. In terms of the landscaping, the project meets or exceeds the requirements for landscaping. However... Excuse me, let me restate that. The requirements for landscaping are met with the project. There's going to be tree replacement as part of Phase 2, and the amount of trees being replaced and shown on the plans exceed the minimum requirements as part of Phase 2. So they do exceed the landscaping requirement. The applicant did comment about the visibility from the neighborhood to the south. Let's see if I can pull up the landscaping plan here. If you go to that townhome development to the south, townhome attached family unit, there's a portion where you can see into the site. There's a kind of a gap in the existing vegetation. Most of the vegetation along that south boundary line will be kept. The applicant, though, is showing some additional landscaping to help supplement that landscaping in this general location as part of future wall construction. So they are addressing the comment about trying to provide additional screening from that area because at Phase 2, that portion of that four-story building, that's closest to the residential neighborhood to the south as part of Phase 2, and the applicant is proposing additional landscaping to address staff's concern in that situation. There was a neighborhood meeting held in March, or I think early March. To date, we have not received any comments for or against the project. This project did also get one of our development information signs that we've been putting up on select applications, the idea to get more interest or more feedback out of the neighborhood. We didn't get any... We don't have any written comments for or against, or even phone calls on that. So that was a new feature here. I think that's my main point. Staff is recommending approval of the five actions with those four waivers, as I mentioned, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Great. Thank you. Questions for the city? Commissioner Mehdi.
I have a few questions. On density, so the RM 2.5 allows up to 17.4 dwelling units per acre. What zoning category, what are they called? What zoning do we have that allows greater than 17.4 by right without a waiver?
I don't believe there are any.
Really?
Maybe TOD and the mixed use, I think, does allow more. But the standard kind of RM zoning districts, I think 17.4 is the highest.
That surprised me that we don't have a higher max density for a multifamily zoning district. But anyway, for Phase 2, which we would be approving now, and it would happen at some unknown time in the future, are these entitlements that they would expire at any point? Do they have to develop within two years or a year, or does this go into perpetuity?
This goes in perpetuity unless we work in a sunset clause on there, but generally they go in perpetuity. The caveat is, is if rules change, the stormwater rules, for example, or any of the governing requirements of assisted living change requiring modifications to the site, any modification to the site that would change the plans that would be approved, that may trigger an amendment to the PUD at that point.
Okay. Thanks. On the covered parking, this got me thinking about the other site on Hennepin Town Road that we had approved, who was assisted living, just north of kind of what we were talking about earlier. And I looked at that one real quick because I was like, oh, did that one have a waiver for not providing covered parking? It didn't appear like it did on the site plan, but I also didn't see that there was a waiver there. Do you know offhand how that was different if it didn't require covered parking?
I can say this because I wasn't here, so it was in my error, but I believe we missed it.
Okay.
And it was kind of an approved waiver by virtue of it not being shown on the plans and supported by staff, but I don't believe... I don't believe there's a formal waiver on that one, but the effect was we waived that requirement for that. I believe you're referring to suite living?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the review of that.
Okay. And then, as it relates to this, this... And I don't know within the code if there's more than just assisted living as a definition of a use, but you know, we're talking about memory care, and then there's different levels of assisted living, right? So, you know, with the suite living and now this one, too, we are setting a precedent that the covered parking isn't necessarily required and will waive that. But my concern would be with, you know, some other properties that have assisted living where we still do have that requirement because maybe it's a different level of assisted living, or, you know, they only have some memory care of the units, the rest are kind of lighter assisted living. How does staff feel about what that definition is? And if we draw a line as to, you know, if it's memory care, it's okay, but if it's some other type of assisted living, it's not okay?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we've had that same conversation here at the staff level. And in fact, we're working on a potential ordinance amendment that would clarify the requirement for parking for assisted living versus active living, like active seniors, you know, the different levels. And at the staff level, the expectation or the, I guess, the understanding would be anything assisted living or requiring a higher level of care would likely not have that requirement for the covered parking. Anything below that, active seniors, age-restricted, that type of thing, would still have the covered parking, at least as a requirement that could be requested from a waiver perspective.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I could just comment on that. I have some recent experience relative to this with my father-in-law, and what we found is the, you know, the three categories that were there were independent living, assisted living, and then some higher level of care typically called memory care, but could be, you know, something else. And the independent living, you know, legitimately, the people who are in the independent living are going to have vehicles and drive themselves. And so I know the two facilities that my father-in-law were, they mixed all of those. So it made it more difficult to say, well, how much, you know, what percentage of the residents are really going to need an automobile regularly, which would then drive the covered parking? So it's not a simple thing, but I personally, having my father-in-law in assisted living for four years, you know, he didn't have a car, there was no need for a car, you know, this... I clearly support the waiver that is being suggested here.
And I would suggest if staff's working on an ordinance, I think this totally makes sense when you have, you know, this property is dedicated memory, you know, assisted living, but the ones that are mixed, like the newer Presbyterian Homes development, and they might change, you know, the number of memory care units over time, I don't... Within the ordinance, hopefully, staff can somehow address because somebody, I think, by right would be able to change. You know, it's not like a completely different use. So anyway, that answers my question on that. Last question. The staff report talking about affordability, and then it talked about an elderly waiver, capitalized. I'm not familiar with that term. Can you go over what the affordability is and what the discussion on elderly waiver refers to?
Yes, Chair Commissioners. And I'm not an expert in this. I lean on our housing people for these type of questions, but my understanding is by virtue of kind of how these projects are funded, how a tenant can access the property, their income is usually limited. And so I don't know who grants the elderly waiver, but I believe by virtue of kind of what their rents, that the portion of what they're paying for is the rent and then the services that they provide, the portion of the rent is not subsidized, but aided by the services that they get. So the rent portion is by definition affordable based on the AMI requirements. I could provide some additional information. This is a good question. I apologize, we don't have a clean answer for you. I can provide some additional information for the council when they review that.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes. Commissioner Farr.
Mr. Chair, a few things. See, number one, landscaping. I didn't see any tree inventory in the set of plans for removals or anything like that. Are we losing any significant or heritage trees in either Phase 1 or Phase 2?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, they are in Phase 2. Phase 1, I believe there's only one significant tree that's being removed, but Phase 2 would have, I think it's in the staff report, it was like 36 or some replacement trees or replacement inches that would need to be planted.
Okay. So we are losing some heritage trees as well?
I don't believe there's any heritage trees removed. If there is, then it might be one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't remember that off the top of my head right now, but the replacement is being met.
Okay. All right. So when Commissioner Mehdi asked about the approval in perpetuity, is the size of a tree determined at the date of approval or at the date of development action, such that if the trees grow larger, will we have more significant tree loss? Does that put a burden on the applicant to add more trees at that time?
Typically, how it's been handled is at the time of approval. So basically, they could go out and do the removals now and then not build the building until later, or they could choose to remove the trees at the time that they're going to do Phase 2. So it's at the time of approval.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. So related to landscaping, there seem to be a lot of comments about the screening from the townhomes, but between residential districts, why are we trying to screen from residential to residential?
I think it's more of a question of density between the two, intense development to the north versus the residential to the south. Frankly, there's the industrial to the west.
Yep.
We didn't see a lot of impact to the screening that's there, even with the removal for the walls and things like that. So the most openings, I guess if you want to call it that, are between the subject property and the property to the south, so that's where we felt the need was for additional screening.
All right. Thank you. The comment I had earlier about the move-ins, the resident move-in and the move-outs, on the Phase 1 site plans particularly, it seems like the moving van has no place to park but to block the circular fire lane around the main driveway entrance to the building. Is that a concern of the city at all? There wasn't a utility plan in the set of plans either, so I don't know what the fire hydrants are for parking a fire truck.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm not sure if I understand that question.
If you look at the site plan for Phase 1, I don't know if you can...
Which I have it up.
Oh, thanks. There it is. Okay. There was a truck circulation diagram on one of the exhibits that the applicant showed, and the truck movements around the existing parking lot. No matter where you would park to move furniture for a few hours would block fire truck access.
Okay.
And I didn't know if that was a concern of the city's during Development Review Committee or not, because I didn't know where the fire hydrants were.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that was not raised during the review of this project in terms of potential conflicts with the fire department. That existing parking lot is... Would be retained through Phase 1. It won't be gone as part of Phase 2. I can alert that comment to the city, the fire chief, to see if there's any additional comment there, but that was not raised as a concern earlier.
All right. Thank you. Last but not least, I saw some comments in the narrative about the city's requirement for certain design standards, and I know we've worked on those hard over the years. In this particular case, I'm not sure that we're doing ourselves a favor here. It is a four-story building, so this triggers this two-story separation from the rest of the facade and things like that. But proportionally, now we have a two-story bottom and a two-story top. Thank you. And it is disproportional at best. I'm not going to sit here and design the building, but normally, we work with different proportions as designers that are more pleasing. This building may not be visible from the public way, frankly, so I don't know how much I want to dig my heels in on this, but I think that if the genesis of the design came from a zoning ordinance requirement of ours, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice. Same thing with the cornice on top. The building that's existing has brick all the way up with no top cornice, and now we have a building with a cornice. And while those arches are carried through, they don't come all the way down to the ground. They're kind of suspended up in the air. I just don't see that... We plucked out all of the nice proportions from the building, and the application to the new building isn't there. I don't see any benefit to them following our zoning ordinance requirements for this bottom, middle, top, when the existing buildings that we're trying to respect and relate to don't have those features. So I would give the applicant an opportunity to redesign the facade to be more in keeping with the proportions and the purpose of the architectural elements of the original building.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Over to you, Chair.
Any other questions for the city?
This is a public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Motion to close, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor of closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed, further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Medley?
Overall, I support the waivers being asked for, I think the density, the covered parking, the height, and the one off Parking Island are fine. My main concern, I just want to echo on Mr. Farr's comments, would be the architecture. I can't articulate any specific comments, but I felt like it wasn't up to par or what I maybe would have expected. So I would agree, I think it needs improvement, and so I would love, well, I guess Mr. Farr has already kind of shared his thoughts on that, if you have any more specifics, I think I always go to kind of your guidance as to these things, but that is the one thing that I thought on this that I didn't fully support.
Thank you.
Other comments, discussion?
Well, in general, I support the project. I think that's an interesting property, and I think that utilizing the existing building is a positive, you know, remodeling the existing building. I'm truly surprised in some ways, Eden Prairie's got a lot of assisted living, and then I look at my own age and people that I've been around, and there's a high demand for that. So again, that's the developers' issue, and I'm not against it by any means, it's still a little surprising to me. I think the location is nice. Regarding the architecture issue, I understand what Commissioner Farr was saying, I'm not, this is a difficult one, because we put some guidelines together that we believed were the right direction for the architectural flavor that we want to see in Eden Prairie. And I think it's clear that there are times when those are a perfect fit, and they are well-applied and improve the architecture that we have in our city, and I think there are times when perhaps, you know, it's not the perfect fit, but I'm not sure that at this point in time, you know, there's reason to take any concrete action on changing or doing anything different. I mean, they're following the rules, the rules in general aren't bad, maybe they aren't a perfect fit for this application, but I personally think in the big picture, we're doing the right thing, and the developer's doing the right thing in working with the city to do what we have said we want them to do, and so I would just, I would go for it. And so I'm a proponent of this, I think it will be a good addition to the city, and I do like the location and the utilization of the topography and the trees and kind of that hidden, I'd never been back into that piece of property, so going back there today was eye-opening, and I think it's kind of a unique spot, and so I like it.
Thanks, Commissioner Kirk. Commissioner Grody.
I think it's kind of interesting that we worry about the outside of the building, looking at the outside, we're going to have people in here looking out the window at a wonderful piece of property. A lot of these, you're looking at another window in another building, and it would be dreary, I would think, so I'm very encouraged by this.
Thank you. Other comments, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Park.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said, and I do not mean to infer that my design comments are meant to trip up the approval of this project, I think it's sound, I think it's needed, I think it's a great site, I think it's a good use of the property, I think the repositioning is good, I agree with the waiver requests on all of this, and so I don't want to get tripped up over all this. I think this is more of a listen and learning experience for us as it relates to application of our zoning ordinance that may result in undue consequences that we're looking at right now. And it is our job as the planning commission to make comments on design, and that's why we're here, and I think design has failed us in this particular case, but I don't want this to trip up the approval of this project, and it's not all that visible from the public way, like I said, so I don't want to dig in too deep, but I think it's a learning moment for us, and I would like the city to have more flexibility in the application of our requirements when we see that it doesn't fit, and I have a feeling that the applicant feels something of the sort that I do, so that's fine.
Jeremy, is that a great ball just moving forward for you and the city to keep that in mind?
Yeah, I think so, I think similar to the last one, it's more of a, almost a sub-recommendation of attention needed.
Yeah, I think it's a learning experience, you know, we're learning on this one, and I don't think the result that we have right here is a bad result, I think it's a good result, and yet maybe we can learn from it and going forward allow some more flexibility. Yeah, and just forecasting, I don't want to forecast any more than I ought to from this chair, but if the applicant takes the opportunity to revisit with staff some of the design elements for a betterment, I would hope that staff wouldn't hold up the application process, the council, on this. If the design changes for the better, I trust staff to work with the applicant to do that past our approval process tonight if we so approve the project.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Kirk.
Move to recommend approval for a guide plan change from office to medium-high-density residential on 3.79 acres, a planned unit development concept plan review on 3.79 acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.79 acres, a zone change from office to RM-2.5 on 3.79 acres, and a site plan review on 3.79 acres as represented in the May 22, 2023 staff report and based on plans last dated April 28, 2023.
All right, a motion for Commissioner Kirk, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second with Commissioner Sherwood, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? All right, recommend approval. Good luck in moving forward, and thank you for your patience while we flip the agenda around. All right, last public hearing this evening is for, if I say this wrong, please correct me, it's Kewachi, all right, 2022-11, request for zoning change from rural to R1-9.5 on 2.11 acres, preliminary plat of four lots and three outlots on 2.11 acres. Good evening, if you would state your name for the record and tell us about your request.
Yeah, my name is Craig Schmidt, I'm a resident of Eden Prairie since 2008, and with me is Todd McLaughlin, who's from Laux, who's my engineer on the project. So as I said, I'm a resident of Eden Prairie since 2008, this is the first development project I've ever endured to take. An opportunity kind of came upon me, and I grabbed it, and it's been a great learning experience. But before I dive into the project itself, I wanted to give a big thank you to Beth Novak Krebs and Patrick Sikora, who've been very helpful in the process. I think we have a PowerPoint. Okay. All right, so I'll go through this rather quickly. So the ultimate plan here is to take land that's currently zoned as rural to residential by converting it to four lots, one of which will be owned by myself, my wife, and two kids. Land was purchased back in 2021 via contract for deed that has come up and therefore taking possession of the property and developing it. So here's the location map of the property, it's right off Duck Lake and 62, about a quarter mile south, at the intersection of Duck Lake Road and Clay Cross. I'll go through this really quick. So that's an aerial photo of the property currently, the house, there's just one house on the property right now, and the rest is trees and some piles, the current owner is, or the past owner was a landscaper, so had some clippings and whatnot, and a couple piles in the property. This is the ultimate plan of what I'm proposing we do with the property, I've worked with the neighbors to the north of the property to sell them ten feet width of outlots, so the outlot B and C would be sold to the neighbors adjacent to those lots, and then outlot A would be deeded to the city, because it borders a wetland, and given the restrictions for drainage and whatnot, we'll have to make that outlot A pretty big. The first three lots will be sold, lot three has the current house on it, which we plan on demolishing and rebuilding with a new home, akin to homes around the surrounding area, and then lot four would be retained by me and my wife. So we're looking to change the zoning from rural to R1-9.5, which is consistent with houses on the west side of Duck Lake, and on the east side or kind of next to the house, it's on R1-13.5, but you can see on the bottom of this, lots one through four, it gets pretty close to that R1-13.5 lot size as well. The plan here is to get this approved today, and then hopefully begin grading and demolish the existing home in June, and get site development work planned this summer, and then initially build my home, which would be lot four, and then sell the remaining lots, of which there's been interest from the neighbors to purchase those lots, and then ultimately complete this project by, for sure by the end of 2024, but hopefully by the beginning of 20, or middle of 2024. I have engaged aligned builders to help with the building, houses, they've built a lot of houses in Eden Prairie, and they've been great to work with thus far. But with that, you have any questions?
Any questions further?
There was one thing that stuck out was the Phase Two, have you received estimates for the remediation?
Can you restate your question?
There was a Phase Two-
Environmental study?
Environmental study, correct.
Yes.
Have you received estimates for the remediation of the contamination?
I have not received estimates thus far, I mean, I'm going to be conducting a bidding process, assuming that this gets approved today and after the council meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Taylor?
So I think you are generous about the landscaping or what's left on the property, because I think I rode past there today, and there's a five-ton truck sitting out there in the property, and a vehicle sitting there, and I'm assuming the neighbors are pretty excited about this change that you're looking at doing, so it seems like it's a pretty good project and an upgrade to the community, so good deal, thank you.
I would concur, appreciate it.
Commissioner Park.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a great project, too, my only question is, why are you giving outlot B and C to the neighbors? I don't understand that transaction.
Yeah, they had expressed interest when I, before I endeavored into this project, I had met with them for coffee, and they had always expressed the interest of expanding their properties, so I offered them to buy a portion, you know, of the property, so it was just a good neighborly thing to do, I guess.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
And just to follow up, you said the neighbors have expressed interest in these lots?
Yes.
Is that to expand their yard, or is that to build, or to-
No, to build, yeah.
Like a tear down?
No, to buy one of the lots and build a new home on it.
Okay, but not tear down, they're just trying to merge?
No, 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 yeah.
Commissioner Medley?
Looking at the map, it looks like to the east, there is another property that almost maybe equally is large, when you're coming up with the plan for how to divide this, not fully understanding where that wetland is, was there consideration taken to, you know, if that's ever developed, is the way this is arranged makes sense for potential continuation with the neighboring lot?
So the neighboring lot to the east, yeah, so that, I believe all that land is deeded to the city-
Okay.
-right now. Are you, yeah, oh wait, to the east.
Yeah, there's a big wetland there.
Yeah, that's all wetland, yep.
Okay.
All right, I think that's all for now, thank you. Nice presentation. Do you want me to take us through the city report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Commissioners, as noted, this is a four-lot subdivision, requiring a zone change to, from rural to R1-9.5. All of the lots meet the minimum size and depth requirements for that zoning district. There are three outlots, two of which could be added to the neighboring properties to the north, and then the other outlot A will be deeded to the city, because the stormwater management infrastructure will be located on that parcel. This project did also receive one of our development signs asking for additional input or comment, we have received no comment for or against during the course of this project. The neighborhood meeting was held last fall, August or so, and so we did want to make sure we got as much opportunity for feedback as we could, and we have not received anything additional. A new sidewalk will be proposed or will be built along the west side of Duck Lake Road. No sidewalk is proposed along the road to the south. And in terms of tree removal, 109 caliper inches of trees are going to be required to be added, the plan showed 92.5 added, so there's going to be a deficit that will be covered by cash in lieu of payment. I think that's it from staff's comments, at least initially, staff is recommending approval of the two actions, subdivision and zone change.
Great, thank you. Questions for the city? Mr. Chair? Just clarification, did I hear you right, you said something about a sidewalk on the west side of Duck Lake Road, did you mean on the west side of the site?
I said east, I meant east side.
You meant east side, thank you, just want to clarify that point. Commissioner Medley?
So we don't have any plans for actual houses here, and I guess just remind me, as long as somebody wanted to come and build their home here, they wouldn't really need to go through Planning Commission again unless they triggered some additional waiver, if they didn't meet setback or whatever the case may be.
True, yeah.
And then with regards to something like the tree requirement, if this is sold to four different owners and they each build their own, how do you divvy up, who is responsible for installing these trees, or does that have to be done before it can be sold?
Either that'll be done before it's sold, or we'll work that into the development agreement to clearly outline the responsibilities for each owner.
Okay, thanks.
This is a public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, do so now, please. Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
I have a motion to close, do you have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor of closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing's closed, any further discussion?
I think it's a good addition, I mean, I think it's a good use of the land, I admire the proponents taking it on, it's, as we've all learned from being on the planning commission, I came on the planning commission not knowing anything about it, it's a big process, so admire your doing that, but I think it'll, I think it's, looks like a good addition to the city, and yeah, I like it.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
I, I agree. I like the project. I think that that's one ugly piece of property as it sits now, so it'll be quite an improvement.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval for a zone change from rural to R1-9.5 on 2.11 acres and a preliminary plat of one parcel into four lots and three outlots on 2.11 acres as represented in the staff report dated May 22, 2023, and based on the plans last dated May 5, 2023.
A motion for Commissioner Kirk to have a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Taylor. Was he, were you in there? Okay. Commissioner Taylor, second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And would anyone like to abstain? Okay, seeing none. Congratulations. You're moving to the next step. Good luck with you. All right, do you have any planners' reports?
I have nothing else here tonight.
Okay. I have one member's report. I was at the, the commission dinner last week, which was a nice time, but I mentioned a concern to a couple of commissioners, and I heard some other concerns bubble up. Even some potholes lately, and then it made me realize that, you know, in Europe, there's cobblestone roads, and it seems like they last a lot longer than asphalt. And then that triggered, Commissioner Kirk, you had a concern, so I thought maybe we should get them out like a public hearing, then maybe we could have a discussion about some of these things.
Yeah, I, I had one of, you know, I was surfing the web and saw something on, you know, glow-in-the-dark pavement markings in, in a city like ours, and I was just wondering, you know, if the engineering department had investigated that or, or done any research on it.
Commissioner Farr?
Yeah, you know, I, I have some concerns also. I got to tell you, I think we need an engineering study on our traffic lights in town, because traffic is just a mess here. And I'm thinking that, you know, if all the like northbound and southbound traffic lights were turned green all at once, and the east-west would, would turn red, that'd make a lot of sense, and then they would all change back, so it'd be green in the east-west and red in the north-south. I, I think we need a study on that.
Yeah, I think these are good ideas. Rod, could you weigh in on each of these for us?
I think those are all great ideas, and I think I'll leave it to my predecessor.
Where are you going, Rod?
Since this is your last meeting, we'll let you take them all again.
You can go out with a bang.
Thank you.
Rod, how many years of service?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Well, thank you for all of your service, and-
Thank you.
This is your last meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not going to address our concerns?
Probably not.
Thank you for the great support you've given us. We really appreciate it.
Well, it's been great, it's been great serving on this commission and our, as a staff member, staff liaison, so, yeah, it's been great, great career. Kind of got, I'm going to miss everything, so.
Retirement's not so bad, though.
Yeah, well, I'm kind of looking forward to that, too, but-
You can still come and give your public comments.
I can be on that side, yeah.
Wish all the best.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, any other members' reports? All right, entertaining motions-
Members' reports.
Yeah, any serious members' reports. Wishing them congratulations, was serious. All right. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.[1792.86][1792.86]